Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of a Whole for May 11th. This is our neighborhood budget session. This is an opportunity where we go out into the public. We have a presentation made by Finance about the budget. And then after that, we take responses and questions from the audience. Some of those questions, we might be able to answer for you, and some of those might be things that we're still delving into and might not be able to have the answers for you this evening. Having said that, the first thing we'd like to do is to do the roll call.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Sane.
Here.
Councilmember Spadeford. Councilmember Spessley. Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Six-member committee.
Thank you. And starting out this evening, again, I want to thank those that are watching and those that are here in the audience. And hopefully, we'll have more joining us as they get out of work and are able to come out. It's a beautiful day, and so I can understand where they might want to be out enjoying that sunshine. First thing I would like to stress before we start with the Finance Department is I know that it's not been easy this particular year. Budgets are never easy. But I do want to assure those that are in the audience as well as those that are listening to us, our goal is to try to answer the questions that we're hearing from the public, to do our fiduciary responsibility, which we are required to by charter. This is not personal against any staff member or the administration. It is our responsibility to look at the material that's presented to us, justify decisions that we are making, and be able then to vote on those. We do have our budget coming up for a vote next Monday, which is May 15th. We will be passing a budget. I know there's been some out there that said, can you get to where you can pass a budget? We are responsible by both the charter as well as state statute to make sure that we are approving a budget on Monday night, and we will be doing that. Having said that, now I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Desiree Kirkland, and she will, whether she herself or Jackson, will be making the presentation, a brief presentation on the budget. So we'll turn it over to you, and thank you. I understand the mic is on, so I don't think you have to do anything to it.
Okay, great. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Glad to be here. And I am going to have Jackson just go with the proposed budget as submitted to council at the beginning of the process, and then we'll be happy to take any questions at the end.
Yeah, so starting out, I guess we'll just talk about the budget process. So departments were given budget instructions for the budget and documents for decision packages and capital improvement plans back in November of 2022. And those budgets were due from departments in late December. From then until March, budgets were modified through discussions with stakeholders, the mayor's office, departments, Finance. And then on March 27th, there was a proposed budget presented to City Council. And then from then until now, departments have been presenting, and there's been a public hearing. So I guess that's where we are currently. As far as the citywide budget, the proposed has a total of just about $275 million, which is a 13% increase from the current fiscal year. This in part is due to increases in community development, specifically DLI and their $5 million grant that they received, higher capital expenditures, and the new public safety As far as general fund revenues, the main sources are the property tax, which is proposed to be $50.6 million. Income tax is $39.35 million. Return on equity, $26.8 million. And state shared revenues, $22.4 million. And those actually make up 91% of general fund revenues, which the total for the general fund revenues is about $153 million. As far as general fund expenditures, those are about $164 million. Retirement and fixed benefits make up 29% of those general fund expenditures. This represents an increase of 8.5% of the total dollar amount from the current fiscal As far as the fixed benefits are concerned for pensions, the fiscal year 23 pensions were $31.42 million. And for the proposed budget, it is $34.5 million. As far as fiscal year 23 retiree, health care, and dental, that was $20.3 million. And the proposed budget is $21.5 million. As far as the capital improvement projects, there's a total of $39 million proposed. This represents over 14% of the total budget and an 11% increase in capital expenditures compared to this current fiscal year. This includes CSO projects from a public service, parking, including a parking study, security cameras, construction and maintenance, which is $375,000. Vehicle-on equipment, which is $7.2 million. $1.4 million for stadium improvements, and $575,000 for new sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk gap closures, and trailways. So, sorry if that was a little fast, but that's kind of the gist of it. And we'll be happy to take any, you know, questions, or if we want to wait until the community asks questions.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. What we will do, because we have the opportunity to question you during our budget process, so this is really to open it up to the public and to listen to their concerns and their questions. So we want to thank you for the presentation. So at this time, we will open the floor up, and if you could please come up to the podium if you have questions, concerns, suggestions, and give us your name for the record, and then you will have an opportunity to address the council. Is there anyone here that would like to make a statement at this point? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Donald Dean, and one of my questions is, with the ongoing pink tag, red tag issue or whatever, has there been an increase or any kind of additional funds allocated to that process so that we can put some leverage on these corporations and landlords that aren't doing their due diligence and fixing their properties? The pandemic is over, and we need people to have safe and secure housing. What I see all the time is unconscionable, and it's really not just Lansing. I see comments from other cities too, but we're Lansing, and as a capital city, we need to lead the way for the city, or for the state, to have some safe, affordable housing for lower income, and well, for everybody in the city, not just for lower income, but especially for lower income, because that's, I mean, that's what the federal government is paying us, and they're paying the city, and paying LHC and everybody else to do. So that's...
Thank you. In this particular budget, we have not added any additional code officers or anything like that. There is being done a top-down study of the department as well as policies and procedures, and they're going to be looking at a fee structure and looking at that. So you will probably see throughout the next fiscal year, some changes that hopefully will address some of your concerns. Is there anyone else that would like to...
Oh, come on, don't go ahead. That's what I'm waiting on. I didn't want to...
Hi. Leslie Arnold for 1410 Sheldon. I'm really concerned about LEPA and all the money that they are getting, given what they've done with it. There's three, aren't they in charge of three? The ball field, the golf course, and the Lansing Center, they're all in the red. I'm not sure why they're not fired. I live on Sheldon, which is right by Grossbeck. And what we have seen since Ormond Park is taken out is the deterioration and how we're being ignored over in our area. Our road is a washboard, and we've had people come fix it, and they've cold patched it, but it's not hot patched, and it's not, it doesn't have that new chip and whatever that stuff is called. It's, people get stuck on that road in the winter. That's not the only reason I'm up here. It's just basically, you know, to go to LEPA.
Okay.
Not a fan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody Washington, 521 Nantucket. Excuse me. I just really want to thank you as a body for finally asking the really tough questions. As I went through this budget, my blood boiled. There is so much waste and so much duplication, and just everything is knee-jerk reaction. We'll throw $100,000 here, yup, you want another $80,000. This has got to stop. There's a reason our roads are horrible, and it's not just the state revenue sharing, the gas tax. We need to start focusing on things like our infrastructure and our housing stock and drawing people into the city. And to be having, I mean, this is nothing personal, but are you kidding me? We are 112,000 people. We are a very small city, and we have two deputy mayors and a deputy deputy mayor. I mean, I, there is just so much waste and duplication, and I know it's been really uncomfortable for some of you up there, but I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Emily. You're a rock star going through this process, and I hope you have some serious amendments to this budget that you're going to suggest. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, it is our understanding that there is a deputy mayor that Jane fills that position, there's also a deputy mayor that Shelby, and then there's a deputy chief of staff. So it's, I just wanted to clarify that, that there's not three deputy mayors, there's just two.
Michael Lynn, I'm here to speak about that, actually. I've dug into this budget for the first time since I've been really engaged typically this way, and just the overwhelming amount of money that we waste on top-tier salaries is ridiculous. And as I'm looking through this budget, I start to look at where money is spent, and I was looking back at budgets, so I was like, let me look at what was going on in 2016, what was going on in 2013. And so, in non-essential salaries, and I mean, as a prior firefighter, I know that we were essential, and everything in the fire department is essential. There is no jobs that are wasteful there. I think about what the union representative comm came and said about not having the money and not having staffing and not having all the things that they need down there. And then I think about the, you know, the overwhelming budget that our mayor's office has, the HRCS has. And again, I want to be clear that I'm glad other people are saying this, but it's not an attack, it's not an Andy versus Mike or Mike versus Andy. It really is just a money issue. When I start to look at this, and this is, again, my first year paying attention to this, I went back to 2016 and looked at the budget out of the mayor's office then, and I think it was somewhere around the lines of $700,000 total. And then I looked at this year's, and what's the proposed budget is out of that office, and it's 1.7 before all the added stuff that was pulled into that office. And I just keep thinking, with all of these deputy deputy deputies that he has, if he doesn't have the amount of money to spend to put into deputy deputy deputies, then he can't do it. And so my ask of the council would be is to reevaluate the HRCS budget and all the jobs that you've had, all of them come in front of you multiple times and say things along the lines of, what do you do? And they can't explain to us what they do. Last Monday, you had the mayor's office come in front of you, Jane came in front of you, Mark came in front of you, and again, you asked a question, and neither one of them were sure about what their job was. And when I made the comment about the charter being violated, and we've seen a video, and I'm sure you all have seen it too, of Jane at a interview for a job, and when she spoke about working in a strong mayor and why she wanted to go to a city manager situation, she started naming what the strong mayor and deputy mayor would be, that if the mayor left, I'm in charge. And when she sat at Cal, she said the same things. We have authorities, and we have, we didn't vote for her, we don't know anything about her background whatsoever, to be in any position of authority. When the mayor's not available, it's on you, Carol. That's per the charter. So if they're doing that, that's the violation of the charter that I'm talking about, not bringing that to you and saying, hey, I'm going to be gone for a week or whatever the case is, and putting the elected official in positions, because that's how our strong mayor's set up. But when we look at this exorbitant amount of money that's spent in these non-essential places, when we're at this deficit that we all keep talking about and recognizing is true, just a 10% budget cut across the top or 5% is not going to be efficient. But it also is not needed for the Lansing Police Department or Fire Department to have that same budget cut when they have essential workers there. So take it from places where they don't need all of these extra $140,000 positions. And my position, and before I leave, and again, three minutes isn't long enough, Carol, I know you probably let me ramble.
I can bring the timer, so...
After listening to Jane speak, I don't know much about her, I don't know how she got here. I do see what her qualifications are, and when I'm looking at that office, when I hear $111,000 for interns, $90,000 is for a social media person, a scheduler, a manager, and all these different things, the only one position that I thought was correct for the mayor's office was what she says she does. So there's somebody in there that doesn't deserve their money, whether it be Andy, whether it be his interns, whether it be all these other people. But at the end of the day, knock that budget back, because what we've seen is even with LPD, they had too much money, they went and spent $250,000 on uniforms, they couldn't figure out how to spend it before the fiscal year ended. So let's not allow that behavior anymore. Knock those budgets back, buy us some more, right now, the current count of LFD is 41 per day, give them 43 per day. Buy them a new truck, buy them a new ambulance, but they need new boats. Our boats break down all the time. So those are things that we could put those hundreds of thousands of dollars towards, a warming center. There's all of these things that we don't need five or six people making decisions downtown when we elected one individual, per the charter, he gets one executive, per the charter, he gets one executive.
I appreciate your enthusiasm. This is still a Committee of a Whole meeting, and the way we run these is with decorum. So no boos, clapping, because that could intimidate somebody that has a different opinion than you.
I agree.
So again, you can pat him on the back when he's done and we're done with our meeting. But...
So the only thing that I ask is that you guys be brave, and I will say this, because there's been a lot of conversation about what Council willing won't do. I've had conversations with pretty much all of you all. I truly believe that my maturation to this point tells me that you all love this city. Genuinely, there is no agendas other than doing what's best for the city, that's why you all put your name in the hat. But at the same time, there's this fear, and I think Cost has been breaking that table down, that if you go against the powers that be, somehow they'll cut your knees out from under you. And I think that you guys are seeing now that it's okay to challenge the status quo, especially where in the position we're in. So I do appreciate you guys holding all these meetings, the conversations that are coming from all of these meetings, and the ability and willingness to say, you know what, we've been rubber stamping, and that's okay, we can take accountability for that point, but from here on forward, we're going to start holding accountability, because I am concerned what five years from now, this budget looks like. I was concerned in 2019, here we are again. So thank you guys for your time and your courage stepping forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Is there anyone else? Nancy.
Thank you, council. I am also here to speak on the budget and very concerned with the wasteful spending that is going on with our administration. When I went to the ballots to vote, I didn't see anything on there regarding deputy mayors at any point in time. When my mayor is out of town, I expect the council president, whoever is in that seat at the time, to be running our city. I attended a meeting today with public service, because I sit on the board, and probably after today, the mayor will probably remove me, but I really don't care. We don't even have the proper equipment for our staff. I mean, some of this equipment dates back to the 1930s. We don't have the proper equipment, as you heard from the four different unions, that our first responders don't have the proper equipment. I know at one point, they were borrowing from other cities for the fire department. That's ludicrous. And I'm sorry, nothing personal against any of the deputy mayors or chief whatever, we don't need them. Over $100,000 for interns in the mayor's office, seriously? LEPA, the golf course, we're subsidizing it again? And he sits there and says, well, if I could get some more golf courses, or golf carts, they want to build a lean-to to store them in. We have a ball stadium that's not used every, you know, every month of the year. The Lansing Center is going to need drastic upgrades in order for it to continue to compete with other places throughout our state. This is ridiculous. We can't even provide the essential things that we as taxpayers deserve. We have three street sweepers. We're lucky if our streets are going to get done twice a year, and it used to be more than that. I am hoping, I know where some of our council members stand on this budget, and to those, thank you very much, but I'm concerned about others on council of where you stand, and given that we're missing two council members for whatever reason, I don't care.
They do have excused absences, so...
Okay. I hope you take a serious look at this. I know I have bent the ears of many regarding the miscellaneous operation expenses that each department has, and I'm going to use the Parks Department as an example, over $450,000 in miscellaneous expenses. And when I asked at a board meeting what that meant, and I was told, well, as long as they keep the purchase under $5,000, they don't need any approval. $450,000, really? That could buy, or could pay for several seasonals to do our stump grinding that we desperately need because of all the trees that are coming down in our city. So please, please, I beg you, please do something with this budget.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, yes?
I feel really short. I'll keep this pretty short. I know I've spoken a lot over the last few weeks about the budget, a lot. First thing I want to do is say thank you to all of you over the last, you know, several meetings that we've had, and the questioning, and kind of digging into all of the departments and the presentations. I've really appreciated the questions that have been asked, and they seem very intentional on really trying to find out and really figure out the spending, the line items, the substantiation, and I definitely appreciate it. I feel like I haven't really seen that over the last, you know, few years, and kind of been frustrated with some of the answers or the non-answers. This time around, it felt like there was some frustration with some of the non-answers from you all as well. So I was pleased with that, and I want to thank you for taking the time to dig in. The question, I shouldn't say question, the urge that I have for you at this point is it's not enough to just ask the questions and to pull the information out, it is what you're now going to do with it. I think that the answers to the questions, the non-answers to the questions, if there isn't specific action done, there aren't serious amendments made, especially to the mayor's budget, I think that that is just kicking the can down the road, and we're at a point where if we continue to kick the can down the road, then we're all going to be questioning. And some of you that won't be here next year, but you'll still be, you know, and you'll still be in the city. You love the city, you know, Mike just spoke on how each and every one of you are here because you care about our city, and several of you I know are going to be here and want to be here for years to come. If that is true, we will not be the city that you love and care about and that we can all care about in, I'd say, two to five years. I think that the drastic mistakes that have been made with our money and the deficit that's growing is only going to get worse, our roads are only going to get worse, our homeless issue is only going to get worse, our food insecurity is only going to get worse. So if we don't make actual changes, none of that will be addressed. So thank you for asking the question. Now what are you going to do with the answers and the power that you do have when it comes to amending the budget?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Yes, if you come forward and state your name for the record.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Chimimana. I live in the city of Lansing for the last five years, and I wanted to say, when I look at the budget, I think we should flip the way we discuss the budget. Because if you are telling me you're spending $1.4 million to the stadium, I would like to hear what was the revenue of the stadium. I don't want to see this on a budget item where you say other revenues. What is it? What is the other? If we're talking about spending money for parking, for studies, I want to know how much are we getting from the current parking? Is it $1,000? Is it $2? How much is it? How is it being spent? Because when you look at the budget and we're paying retirement, most of the money is going like to retirement fringes, that tells me that most of the revenues of the city, that's where they go. If the city is telling me that my tax can be increased by nearly $15,000 in less than two years, it means like where I live should be really pristine. I should have clean roads. I should have sidewalks where my son should not trip every single day. If you are telling me that we have, you know, 2.2, nearly $2.2 million to spend on roads, what are those roads really? Because for the last five years, I don't know which roads you spend money on. The only road that was fixed is Clements, and I was like, one in a long time. Then there was like a little tiny portion of Foster on the other side. So sidewalks, maybe Nazis sidewalks around her house, and I was like, how do you get these sidewalks done? You call. I have been calling that number. No one ever comes. So to me, I look at the budget, and I would like to see the council we vote for care more, because otherwise, there is nothing really that tells me I should stay in the city of Lansing. I can go to East Lansing, they can increase my tax, but my roads will be done, but my sidewalks will also be fixed. Plowing will be done on time. If a kid gets hit in our street and we request for a hump, it's not going to be an argument. Oh, we can send anything to remove snow if we put on a hump to reduce speed in your neighborhood. Huh, really? But yet, in your neighborhood, I have been there too. You have humps, how do they remove snow? To me, that's duplicity, and it's not really helping the community, because if you care about the community, we really want to see it. If you talk about parks spending over $2 million, I'm wondering what are those parks? Because me and my son have been to most of the parks really in the city of Lansing, none of them are updated. Even MARCH, you know, the MARCH you put on to just soften the park, even now it's not there. If a piece in a park is broken, do you know how long it takes to be repressed? Maybe two years. Near at the school, one of them got broken. It took nearly two years to just fix a tiny piece. So when we see the budget, we'd like to just understand more, but also to relate that to what we see in the city, you know? Because otherwise, to me, it doesn't tell us much. We can sit here, we can say... We can sit here, we can say, I have been going through spreadsheets as an engineer for a long time. But I can go through here, can say this is wrong, or this has gone down, why is this? But in the end, what do we see in a community that reflects the discussion we had? You know, are the citizens being heard? Or it's just it goes through one year and goes out through the other year? Yeah. And I rest my case, and I hope maybe next time we would have a better conversation. And the line of items of revenue, where we need to spend more money, we need to know what are those businesses really bringing in for the city? Because if you're spending 1.4 million on a stadium, it better be bringing in 5 million. If that stadium is bringing in like 10K, I don't know, should we really spend 1.4 million? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that we've asked for in the past, and that is outcomes. We actually did a budget study, and one of the things that we had asked was that we, part of the budget show the outcomes for the request for the funds. That's not something that we've had since I've been on council. So is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going once. Going twice. Okay, at this time, Jeffrey, you've got a microphone down there. If you want to turn it on and if any council member would like to make a comment at this time, we'll go down the line and having closing comments. And then we will allow people to go home and enjoy the rest of their evening.
I just want to say thank everybody here for coming. I heard your voice and have been taking notes. And the rest of the community, many of you that are here today are, you know, representing neighborhoods or more than just that are sitting in this room. And so I definitely take that into deep consideration as we go forward because, you know, I'm a resident too. I'm born and raised here, and it's important to me. So definitely taking full eyes, full intent in every line item in this budget. And I really appreciate everyone being here, and I heard your voice. Thank you.
And just for the record, if you could pass the mic right back to him, Councilmember Jackson, state your name and what you represent. So if there's somebody here that isn't familiar with each of you, they will know who you are.
Okay, thank you, President Wood. My name is Jeffrey Brown. I'm City Council Member at Large, so I represent all wards of the city of Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for being here. Brian Jackson, 4th Ward. That's generally the northwest side, but it has some south side and a lot of downtown. I'm hearing everybody's competing interests from various forms and fashions, and I'm interested to hear about the amendments that everybody brings. I know I have three that I'm looking at, hoping to bring, and I don't know how everything's going to shake out, but it sounds like there's a lot of need for sure in the city, and the funding seems to keep going less and less. I know the fixed benefits and all that, it went up, you said, 8% increase. And I thought that we made some moves that were supposed to make it better. So I was, you know, I was like, oh, wait, 8%? I should have heard that before. But either way, that keeps eating more and more of the general fund. I was kind of disappointed to hear the answer straight up, that there was no plan for the deficit, or like it wasn't addressed, especially when we had all the ARPA money. I know that filled the gap on things that were supposedly generated from the pandemic, but really they were all things we've always needed, but I guess could be exasperated as everybody explained. So thank you all, and I'm looking forward to Monday, and hopefully we can work together and find a fair solution.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Ryan Cost. I represent the 1st Ward, which we are currently sitting in. Shameless plug, there's great places to eat when you all leave here in the 1st Ward. It's not that I've just heard, Joe. I've been hearing you. I got this budget and immediately knew something was wrong. When you're spending nearly $12 million more than you have coming in, I can't do my budget at home like that. I am listening to you. I've gotten your text messages, your emails, your pigeons. You have gotten to me any way you can. We have got to reduce, and I am very hopeful we can reduce this budget. Because when we're increasing property tax to our residents by nearly 5%, but making no cuts to spending as a city government, but increasing spending by 13%, that's unacceptable to me. We tell people they need to tighten their belts in hard times. The city needs to learn how to tighten our belts. I'm going to try as hard as I can to make that happen. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Cost.
Sure. I'm Adam Hussein. I am the current representative for southwest Lansing on the Lansing City Council. And I'm not going to repeat what's been said. I've said a lot, a lot the last few weeks. I think folks know where I'm at. I think folks know that I'm absolutely of the belief that it is far past time for accountability, for transparency, for engagement, for actually doing the work that we're being asked to do. And let me tell you how much I appreciate the folks in this room. I know just about every one of you. You guys are deeply engaged or committed to the city. We certainly appreciate that, with the exception of Todd Haywood, of course. Totally kidding. But, but serious, you, you, you hold us accountable. You make us better. We certainly appreciate that. This body has a lot of work to do over the next 72 or so hours. But I do believe from what I can, what I've been able to gather from this group, that work is being done, work will be done. And I, and I think we're going to, we're going to, we're going to be able to pass a pretty decent budget come Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Garza.
All right. Thank you, Council President. I'm Jeremy Garza. I represent the 2nd Ward, City of Lansing. That's the southeast quadrant. Born and raised here in Lansing as well. It's a beautiful day out. I appreciate all of you guys being here. Would like to see more people. I mean, but we've had, we've heard from everybody. Everybody from each side of the ward, from the north side to the south side. And we understand what's going on in our city. We understand. We do have an inflated budget. We're going to be reaching a deficit come 2024. We are all working together as a team. We're all talking. We're being collaborative. Not the open meeting, not by any chance, but we are doing our work. We are talking to the administration. We are talking to the different departments. You know, we are leading by example. We are reducing our budget by 10%, and we are hoping that others will follow. You know, we've done that in the past, and we're going to continue doing that. We brought a spreadsheet of what we want to see, you know, across the board, across the departments. We excluded the police and fire. We are not going to expect them to take any 5% or 10% budget. We know there's other, other departments in the city of Lansing that obviously are a little inflated. And if we can't hire police officers, if we can't hire firefighters and paramedics, I mean, that's, that's something to be said. I mean, you know, and not to, not to keep, keep beating the drum, but I mean, deputy mayor, deputy assistant, you know, chief financial officer, they're all making the same amount as our, our police chief and our, and our, and our fire chief. I mean, when, 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 when that, stuff like that happens, I think we need to take a serious look at what our priorities are in the city of Lansing, and, and that's what we're doing. So I appreciate you guys being here tonight, and I'm available anytime you guys want to get ahold of me. Thank you.
Again, Carol Wood, Councilmember at Large. I do want to recognize that Councilmember Spitzley is out of town on a work issue, and Councilmember Spatafor, who's also at large, is ill, and so that's why he's not here this evening. It's not for a lack of interest, it's the fact that neither one could be with us this evening. You know, again, I, I, I think that everyone here has been quite eloquent in their comments and stating that we are listening, we are hearing. There are a number of things that we're evaluating and trying to come up and determine the best way to move forward. Passing a budget, and, and once that happens, always does have the potential of a mayoral veto on that. We pass an entire budget, the mayor can take a look at it and can line item and, and make vetoes on that. And then that would be incumbent upon 2/3 of council or six members of council to vote, to override a veto. And that's an up or down vote with that. You know, our goal is to come up with solutions that we can all live with, the administration as well as council and the public. These are your dollars. Yes, each one of us are residents here, and each one of us are paying, you know, whether it's renting and paying your, through a property tax that way, or whether it's owning and paying a property tax, we are all paying an income tax. We understand what you're having to deal with. We're driving the same streets that the gentleman talked about and that Nancy talked about. We are walking on those same sidewalks. We're going to those same parks. Our goal is to make sure that this is a city that we can all be proud of, that when it's all said and done, that we are moving in the right direction, and that we are setting ourselves up to be able to answer the hard questions in the future. We understand that, again, it was having the American Rescue Act dollars helped us during a very critical time, but they are no longer available to us. And so we have to figure out how we move forward. And we can't expect it to be solely on the backs of the residents of the city of Lansing. There has to be some, some changes. But we also have to make sure that when we're making those changes, we're still providing you the services that you expect and are paying for. So with that, I want to thank everyone for being here. I want to thank the administration for being here, doing their budget presentation. We also have from the city attorney's office, Mr. Abud, and we have our internal auditor with us as well, and our office manager, Sherry Bok, is with us. So again, thank you all for coming, and we look forward to still having discussions with you. Thank you.